Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, July 1st, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairman Goonin, will you please call this meeting to order?
Yes. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the land of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on its mission under God and to the people who have been given justice for all.
So Kevin, Ken.
Okay, I will now take roll call. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shenimeo.
Here.
Jen Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Goonin.
Here.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak is absent today.
All right. So we only have one thing on the agenda for tonight, and that is consideration of the redevelopment plan for 1101 First Avenue. So Beth, if you want to come on up. Before we get started, Mayor Moore just wanted to make a comment.
Yes, thank you very much, Michael. So this morning, a friend called me this morning asking, "John, how could you let this happen again? You're a man of your word, and you said publicly this would never happen again." I said, "What are you talking about?" He said, "Well, I got an email this morning saying that the hearing tonight wasn't advertised." I said, "Well, that's totally not true. Truthfully, this hearing should have been two to three weeks ago, and because it wasn't advertised, I asked for it to be postponed, and the applicant agreed." I found out today, not only once, but twice did the applicant send out notices because of our fantastic Asbury Park postal system, just dropping them all in the lobby. So residents within 200 feet were notified of tonight's meeting. It was advertised in the newspapers, and the planning board attorney, what I said was, when the meeting was advertised in the agenda, I said, "Was it notified?" The answer was yes. Jack looked into it and found out everything was done perfectly legally. So I just wanted to do that little bit of housekeeping. Thank you.
If I may. Actually, Mr. Kennedy, overnose. His obligation was to notify everybody going to certify, but he didn't, which he did. And it turned out that posting took a lot of the certifies and don't commit a law. So he did it a second time, which he didn't have to do, but he did. So he went way, bent over backwards to give everybody adequate notice. And the content of the notice is fine, and we're in good shape. I'm satisfied.
So we have jurisdiction tonight?
We sure do. Well, we would have it without that, because that's municipal ordinance, not a state land use requirement. So the board would still have the authority to proceed. City of Asbury Park has decided that they would be asking these applicants to notice, which they have. We're good.
Thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
Beth, you want to join us?
Yeah. Hello, Beth, how are you?
I'm good.
Raise your right hand. Tell me swear or affirm the testimony about the giving of this right to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the presentation this evening.
Sure. My name's Elizabeth R. Beth McManus, M-C-M-A-N-U-S, and I am the city's planner. I put together a presentation on the draft redevelopment plan amendment this evening.
Okay. With that, let's introduce as exhibits, we don't have to introduce the notices, because we've looked at them, they're fine, but the council resolution that referred this matter over to us is Resolution 2024223. Let's call that Marie C. 1, City 1, and then the actual proposed amendments that have been circulated and prepared by Beth's office. Let's call that C. 2. Okay. With that, I'll be quiet. You want me to explain? Beth is doing that. You want to explain to the public how this type of hearing works? This is more of a, this is a review function. It's not an application for development. There's no approval or denial of what is before us. Under municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey, any proposed amendment to a redevelopment plan, which this is, must be referred by the governing body over to the planning board. The planning board has the right to look at that, and with the background of being the city master plan and such other matters that the board deems relevant in general, in terms of planning its own. The board then will make recommendations, which can, which may or may not be followed by the governing body. There's no statute that says they have to be followed, they're just recommendations. The way we operate with these sort of things is applicants, presentation will be made, members of the public will be afforded an opportunity to ask questions of the presenters or the witnesses, relevant to their testimony that they give. And then at the end of that, when we're all done with that portion, there'll be a public comments section that allows every member of the public to get up and make a three-minute statement as to what their feelings are about what they've heard this. Yes.
Why is the developer presenting as opposed to this?
Because this is a city, this is a city-proposed redevelopment plan, and that's the way it is. This isn't an application for development. If the developer was here for a site plan approval, Beth wouldn't be sitting here. Because it's a city ordinance that's going to be possibly amended by the mayor and council. There's no guarantee that it's going to happen, but it's just over here for review. Yes, sir.
Just one point. I watch this AP-TV every week, and you're very hard to hear on TV.
Is that a fact? Usually people tell me I'm too loud.
No, no, you're so hard to hear, and you're saying the most important things, and...
All right, I'll speak up. I'm sorry.
No, no, no worries. I hear you here, but on TV, it's a little difficult.
Okay. I'll do my best. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Beth?
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, folks, so as Jack gave me a good introduction for, this is for a new amendment to a redevelopment plan. So this is for a site referred to as 1001 First, and it has an existing redevelopment plan. What's before you this evening is simply an amendment to that redevelopment plan. Sorry, I was, there we go. I guess my computer just needed a breath. So more specifically, in addition to just simply being located at 1001 First Avenue, it's also located on Block 401, lots 10, 11, 12, and 13. The property is about 1.3 acres, and as you can see from the plan here, the site is the vacant property at the center of the screen. It has frontage along Langford Street towards the bottom of the screen. It's got frontage on Second Avenue towards the right of the screen, and then, of course, it also has frontage on First Avenue to the left of the screen. And so you can see from the aerial photograph here that the site is surrounded by, really what I would say is a variety of land uses. We've got some, generally speaking, single-family homes directly to the rear. We've got townhouses and multifamily located to the north on the opposite side of Second Avenue. And then we have commercial uses located to the south, opposite First, and also along Langford as well. And so we've really got a variety of uses, ranging from, really from more industrial to single-family homes. This area really runs the gamut. Other noteworthy characteristics about the property is that, yes, it's vacant, but I think more importantly, it's been vacant for about 25 years or so. It's a former industrial site, I think a plastics manufacturer, I believe. And I do know that the site is contaminated, and so as part of redevelopment efforts, we'll come clean up of those contamination, of that contamination. In terms of that site history, like I said, the site's been vacant now for more than two decades, but from a planning and regulatory perspective, I think the most important site history here is the fact that we have an existing redevelopment plan that we're amending and building off of. That plan had been adopted in 2018. Subsequent to the plan adoption, the previous property owner sold the property to the new entity that the city is engaging with today, and they've been working with the city now for a couple of years. Most recently, there was a public presentation that, too, was publicly noticed in October last year, and that presentation occurred before the council, where the developer provided the presentation, and public comment and questions were welcomed at that point. So let's get into this. The way I've set the presentation up is to provide a comparison to what's currently proposed versus what had previously been adopted. So as you can see, there are a couple, I think some of the most important distinctions are, one, a change in use, and, two, a change in density on the property. So previously, the site was permitted for residential as well as commercial uses, and as you can see here, we have just residential use is now permitted. So that means we're eliminating retail, restaurant, office, and service uses on the property. The other change is an increase in the density from 80 units, maximum 80 units, to now a maximum of 104 units, so another 24 units. The affordable housing remains the same at a 20% set aside. Obviously, as the number of units go up, the number of affordable units will go up, but the set aside remains the same. The parking for the residential uses has not been changed. It was and remains today at 1.2 spaces per unit. However, with the elimination of the commercial uses, we certainly don't have those parking requirements being necessitated anymore. For the, for those that might be interested, though, the previous parking requirements were, for commercial space, it was one parking space for the first 10,000 square feet of commercial area, and then one additional parking space would be necessary for each additional 3,000 square feet of commercial area above the first 10,000. So if you had 13,001 square feet of commercial space, you would require a total of two parking spaces for the commercial and then for the residential as well.
Beth, when you say the density is increasing, is the density, is the hypothetical potential building increasing in size, or is the increase in the residential units staying within the same hypothetical level? And, you know, that's, you get that increase because you're eliminating the non-residential uses?
So the 2018 plan does not include building plans or renderings that were required, but I do think that the answer is that the building footprint is going to get larger as a result of the increase in residential units.
The footprint?
Yes. And as you'll see, one of the things I wanted to point out is the building height has not changed, but things like the, some of the other standards have been adjusted to accommodate the 104 units. So I think the reality is, a building built in 2018 or 19 with the 80 residential units might have a smaller building footprint than what might be built today with 104 units.
So I assume we had to, like, builders distributed, like, is this now what's proposed to be amended, because this was approved?
No, that is what is proposed for today. There was no building concept plan, no footprint that was required and approved as part of the 2018 plan.
So we're talking about this footprint?
Correct. Correct.
Can we go back a slide before we do this? The parking requirements, does that include the affordable units?
Yes.
Okay, so 1.2 for all 104 units.
Correct.
Can I ask you a question on the affordable housing?
Sure. That's okay.
In the actual legislature, if one of the changes is to require certain of the affordable units in the first area of the housing use, is that a updating it for current regs, or that the amendment is in effect?
Both. The, so that's consistent with the current regulations that were not specified or, were not specified in the old plan.
Beth, one question, sorry.
Sure.
So the 2018 plan included 10,000 square feet of commercial space, or?
It permitted. I presume, I would assume the developer would have wanted to build that out, but I don't know for certain, because there was no plan required.
All right. Thank you.
So other, I think, important building changes. So we have no change to the building height, or I should say, important building regulations. One of them is no change to the building height. It was and continues to be five stories, 55 feet. There are changes to the building and lot cover. They've gone up 15% respective, 15% each, from 65% to 80% for building, and 75 to 90% for lot cover. The rear buffer is largely the same. I think what's, the distinction I'd like to make is that this redevelopment plan regulates the rear buffer versus the 2018 plan, just simply pointed to existing city standards. In addition to that, so there's a five-foot buffer required under both scenarios, but this redevelopment plan also requires a fence at the rear of the property. And then the last distinction that I wanted to make between the two plans is that the, this current plan, the 2024 amendment, includes concept plans, those that are included in the back of the plan, that the developers obligated to comply with, versus the 2018 plan did not. There were, I know that there were concepts that were associated with the discussion in the redevelopment plan, but they were not required to be implemented here. We have a very different scenario where the, where similar to other redevelopment plans I've written for the city, it requires that the developer comply with the concept plan, it requires that the developer comply with the building renderings, and essentially any document or any plan that you see included in the redevelopment plan.
Beth, will this be a story?
Yes. I think it might actually be the next one. Yep, there we go. So I've got, as you'll notice in the plan, there's two versions of the site concept plan. Not that they're different, but they just provide differing level of details. So here's a plan where you can see where the building footprint is located on the property itself, and here it is where, with more detail provided, and you don't see the aerial surrounding area.
Could you go back a few more?
Yeah, I think, I was going to say, I think this is a little easier to talk to.
So by the way, because in 2018, something like this was not presented, right, to show the footprint?
It was not required.
Wasn't shown?
I don't know. I wasn't involved in that, in that plan.
But my point being, I'll cut to the chase, is I guess if I got my directions right, it's the...
North is to the right.
The south is to the right.
Yep.
But it's, so you know, it's like, the footprint comes out past the front of the houses, above the rest.
So it extends a little, yes.
Was that in 2018? That existed 2018, or is this part of the increase in the footprint?
The...
I have a follow-on question that may combine well with this, because I need a clarification, I think along the same exact line. Did the 2018 plan allow a zero-foot setback?
Yes. Yeah. So it's, so the setback is, the required setback is not changed, what the, between the 2018 plan and the 2024 plan. And so where that building might have sat in 2018, 2019, how they proceeded, I can't exactly predict, because we didn't have a required concept plan, but I can tell you that the minimum setback is unchanged from the street.
So that's something I would not, talk about, and say, I mean, is that something we're not permitted?
Correct.
We're allowed to make recommendations.
You're allowed to make a recommendation that you feel relevant, that's board.
So, as I said, this is the concept plan. I think some of the important details that you can, that I think, I wanted to provide both concepts, but this one's a little easier to read and to digest, I think, in a presentation. But important notes that I'd like to make here is, one, you see vehicle access to First Avenue over towards the left of the screen, and what you see facing Second Avenue in the gray area facing the lofts building, which is the building just shown on the side of the screen opposite the site. That gray area is really the resident lobby amenity bike storage area. And so the, I would say, the people access, so to speak, faces second, the vehicle access faces first.
I'm sorry, I ask again, you know, does, I know it was appropriate, like, to show a setback, and where that building was.
One second. Let's make sure, because it might not get picked up where it was.
There's the issue that the, I don't know if it extends this far, but I know my property, I had an issue with it. The right-of-way of the city is 100 feet, and it was, and the streets are about 60, so, you know, you can't have any building in that 100 feet. Does that, is that the same situation here, and does that footprint then go into that 100-foot right-of-way?
Yeah, so let's take a look at this concept plan. I think this plan is better for that level of detail that you're asking for. I wish I had a pointer, but if you, if you take a look, you can see the lines to, yeah. What James is going to help me identify is the fact that the building is at about a zero-foot setback. I think it's just maybe two feet shown on that, on that plan right there, and you see the same thing on the opposite side, and it's facing Second Avenue. And it's a bit deceiving for exactly that point that you're making. It looks like the building has a setback of about 21, 22 feet, but that's only because of how wide the right-of-way is, and how much of the grass and the sidewalk is actually within the city right-of-way as opposed to the private property. So when the setback states zero feet and the building shows a setback of zero feet or very close to it, the visual impact is not of a zero-foot setback. Instead, it's something closer to a 10 or 20-foot setback, because you have these grass areas in front of the, between the building and the sidewalk, not to mention the sidewalk and the grass area on the opposite side.
Well, I don't know if that answers my question.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
Because, you know, like, so for instance, the city's right-of-way comes right through my front lawn. You know, I have steps, you know?
I can help you. I can get you. The setback is from the front property line of the applicant, right?
Correct.
So that would not be within the city right-of-way. They would own their, they own their property up to the two-foot, two-foot mark in front. On the other side of it, that's in the right-of-way. Like, you have, part of your front lawn might be in the city right-of-way. That's in the right-of-way, but the structure itself is not.
The structure will not be in the city.
Oh, no. No, I'm sorry. That was a question.
I knew where you were going.
That's much similar. Yeah. Yeah, the building will not be in the right-of-way for certain.
How far does that building sit in front of the prevailing setback of the residential houses on Second and First?
I would say it's not dissimilar as you take, I don't have an exact measurement, but as you take a look at, for example, on Second Avenue, the majority of the building frontage, building setback, looks very consistent with those first few homes. As you take a look at the properties along First, it looks as if the building extends beyond those existing setbacks by approximately eight, excuse me, 10 or 12 feet.
This dimension here says about 15 feet, right?
We get an exact measurement?
Yeah, but that is to the property line in the building, it has...
Okay, so 13 feet. Right, you know, two feet here.
Right.
And 15 feet here. We're just assuming that this dotted line is approximately equal to the porches here?
Okay.
Does that feel, does that feel fair?
Mm-hmm.
So if there's, this side of the building will sit 12 full feet in front of adjacent properties.
So let's take a look at the building itself. So there, I don't have every image from the redevelopment plan, because there are quite a few, but I did pull some of the more important renderings, I think. This first is from the corner of Langford Street and Second Avenue. And so as you take a look at this building, what you see along Second, which is the road to the right of the screen, that's the entry area for the lobby that I had pointed out on the concept plan, that gray area at the corner of the building. The other portions of the building where you can, sort of on either side of that piece of art that's on the first floor, that's, that's the first floor parking, and so those are the architectural screens, if you will, that provide shielding of the parking. Of course, the building is facing Langford as well as Second, as you'll see on First, it has two stories and then is setback for the second two stories, similar to the lofts adjacent across the street. And then you can see at the top of the screen that fifth story that's sort of peeking out from above the fourth story.
Beth, I'm sorry, but the only reason we're looking, we're not providing plans.
Correct.
The only reason we're looking at this is because part of this amendment is, they have to build to this.
Correct. Yes, I, yeah, I certainly don't, yeah, I would not show concept plans if they were not required in this type of a meeting. Correct. And so...
So if I may, so then it would be fair to comment, comments from the board about architecturals and the like?
Yes, I think the board...
Because that's part of the review.
Absolutely. Architectural, concept plan, the narrative or the text in the plan is all within the board's review.
Yeah, because if it comes over as law and adopted, then our site plan review would be limited.
Correct.
Okay, yes, so now here's, now's the time and here's the place. Okay.
And so here's the First Avenue rendering, and what you can see, some of the important points here, I think, are the fact that the building has a similar design to what we just saw along Langford, and then you can see right there the vehicle entrance as well. There's a straight view for Langford, of course, and, you know, one of the things I do want to point out is there's some public art that's going to be incorporated into the building, and so that'll be another, just another point of interest for the building facade. Here's the Second Avenue frontage, and so you can see right towards the center of the screen, that's the access to the lobby as well. And then this is the rear of the building along First Avenue, and I wanted to show this because it depicts not only the property frontage, but also it gives you a sense of the buffer and the fencing that's now required along the rear. And then...
Sorry, you said this was reading?
Yeah, so this is the rear of the property that, that this image is taken sort of from the corner of the property along First, looking to what would be the back of the building.
Can you go to the slide before I move? Yeah, so then what protrusion above the taller part, is that a unit in there, is that a bump?
So, so right there, that's part of, that's not part of their unit necessarily. That is certainly going to be used for circulation area, but what you can see, I would, I would point to the second three-story gray area of the building. You can see behind that, that's the fourth story that's behind, that's located to the rear where there's residential space. Does that make sense and answer your question?
Oh, that setback.
Yeah, that setback. Okay. And so we've got First Avenue, building rear. And then the last part I wanted to share with folks, because of course you guys are here for, or I guess I'm here for two reasons. First is to review the redevelopment plan, the second is to talk to you about what master plan policies the board might consider as you think about consistency. And I pulled about five of them together here, and so this is all, of course, from your 2018 reexamination report. The first one I wanted to point out is some language regarding ensuring that infill development complements the context and qualities of adjacent neighborhoods with an appropriate scale, massing, and character. We also have language to encourage redevelopment in appropriate locations in a manner that's compatible with the organic or historic development pattern. We also have language to balance housing options, including affordable housing, to encourage development of really a mix of incomes ranging from low all the way up to market rate, and then to fully integrate affordable housing, both within projects and geographically within the city, and then lastly, to identify inclusionary zoning opportunities. And so these are five policies or specifically goals and objectives that I think, that I would recommend that the board consider. I think they're quite relevant to this redevelopment plan.
Is affordability limited for a period of time?
No, it's limited for at least 30 years.
And is part of, as I showed, as a redevelopment, like, the ability to go for pilot and exempt from the school taxes? from the school taxes?
They have the ability to make that request, yes. And I think with that, I'm happy to entertain more comments and questions from the board and public.
I've got a few. I'll say, I don't like, I don't know.
Oh, Dan, you just jumped on, you just jumped on Jim.
That's all right, sorry.
Got it, Dan.
You know, I don't like the difference of the, the building on First Avenue go past and the houses that are built to the west extends beyond.
I'm going to agree with you, Dan, and say that to the point of the redevelopment, I'm sorry, the reexamination points that you brought up in there, it says is consistent with the historic development pattern. And while this had previously been an industrial site for some time, many years prior, they were residential properties. Therefore, they probably align with the prevailing setback. And I think that that part of the setback, both the part on the private property and the part in the public right-of-way are part of our historic city plan. And maintaining that east-west view corridor and restoring it where possible should be a goal.
Specifically, what is this amendment supposed to do? What specifically, what drives this amendment as compared to what was approved back in 18?
Well, aside from the, just the differences in the plan and the requirements that I went through, I think that the purpose of the amendment is to try to facilitate development or redevelopment of a long vacant property, to try to work with a new property owner, to see the site get developed, to be productive in the city and to, to do so in a way that, that represents something that the city is comfortable with and that the developer can construct.
Specifically, why is it now being proposed that the commercial uses be eliminated?
Why are the commercial uses being eliminated?
Yeah.
I can't speak to the developer's intention, but I, but I don't recall any, any desire to, to do commercial uses on the property. So from the developer's side, I think there's a lack of desire. From the, from the city's side, I will say it reduces the activity on the property from potentially a busy restaurant or retail store to just simply residential use. And so it reduces the activity, reduces some measures of intensity in, in that way as well.
This particular property is sort of in a transition from Memorial to the residential buildings, residential areas to the west. And it seems to me that you have along Langford, you have a lot of commercial uses and that it would be appropriate to continue those commercial uses. The city needs those uses as well as residential uses. I think in the long run, it may be more advantageous to keep that, to keep the commercial element in that building as it was originally proposed in 2018.
Thank you.
Since it's all residential being proposed now, what is the city's goal as far as affordable dwelling units? We're picking up 21 affordable units in this particular proposal. What is the overall goal for the city?
Well, there's no numerical goal that's been cited for new construction, but I think that generally speaking, the goal is to integrate affordable housing throughout the city, throughout any new development, to try to slow gentrification or to try to address and mitigate gentrification more specifically, and to try to address the, the growing lack of affordability that the city is experiencing as housing prices have increased.
With this particular development, by changing it from a density of 65 units per acre, this proposal increases it by 30%. And now we're up to, I forget, to number 82 or thereabouts, units per acre. And it's awful dense. The 65 is pretty dense, but now we're, we're increasing the density. And if we're going to keep the footprint approximately the same, it seems to me that all the units now are going to become smaller. And is that really desirable?
Well, I think that the footprint is going to, to increase a bit, so I don't, I don't want to suggest that this is just simply more units going in the same box that would have been permitted. So I do think that the building footprint will increase. We've certainly allowed for more building cover than was previously permitted. But in terms of the building size, or excuse me, the unit size, just.
You didn't show us the footprint.
No, but the building cover has been increased in the redevelopment plan. It's typical.
Where is this footprint pushed out from? From Hypothetical?
No, I mean, I haven't, I'm, I don't want to represent that I know what would have certainly been built under the 2018 plan. I've seen renderings that they had put together, but I can't represent that that is definitely what was going to be built and that the planning board can consider that as a definitive change.
Per, per the plan, the setbacks have not changed. So even though now we have a concept plan that shows the coverage, the setbacks in the plan haven't changed. Is that right?
That is, so, correct. So First and Second Avenue were always at zero feet. For Langford, it was a maximum of five feet. It's now a minimum of five feet. I don't want to suggest that's a significant change, but there is a literal adjustment to it.
And I think you said earlier, earlier appearance about even though we don't have an affordability requirement now, since, you know, we have the RCA, all these units, this will go like in the bank for us should we get required.
Yes, yes, absolutely. All, every affordable housing unit that's regulated in this plan and anything I've written will always be eligible for credit against the city's obligation. And so while the city doesn't have a number, like an obligation that we need to put these units towards, the city has other types of affordable housing obligations that if we wanted to, we could use these credits again. So for example, the city has a rehabilitation obligation, an obligation to work with tenants or homeowners that are low and moderate income to provide funding to help bring their units up to code. The city has made a policy thus as of today or as of a handful of years ago, that is not going to create new housing units to satisfy that rehabilitation obligation. That is permitted. And so if that policy changes in the future, if in five years, 10 years from now, the city decides it wants to satisfy its rehabilitation obligation with these new, newly constructed housing units, we have the ability to do so. And so even though we don't have that obligation, making sure that all of our affordable units are eligible for credit gives us the flexibility in case we get an obligation in the future and to potentially use them for alternative means if necessary.
But when you get an obligation in the future, does the obligation come with a timeline for, in other words, when you get an obligation, does they have to be 30 years minimum?
Yes. Yes, there's some nuance there, but yes.
Okay, so like, we're five years down the road. You know, we built these today, right? So they're 30 years, but five years down the road, we've got 25 years remaining. They still get credited to a junior requirement then in some shape of that?
Yes, yes.
I have a question on the side, the board will get it.
The sides?
Yeah, on the side, the case for the test, talked about square footage for different types of housing in the first one. What that, what that is based upon, is that the standard that we use, is the last item that's already in.
So just, yeah, for, for folks that aren't looking at this directly, there's an average, minimum average required for the affordable units. And it is either the average size of the market rate units for that same bedroom type or a specified figure like, for example, 875, 875 square feet for a two-bedroom. The square footage requirements come from the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency. They provide funding for 100% affordable housing projects, and those minimum bedroom requirements are set forth in those rules. They're commonly pulled for purposes like this. Yep.
Question about, the amendment shows sustainability, like a change to the sustainability requirements, is that the, the other ones stay as is and the EV is only changed?
Yeah, that is correct. Yeah, the, the original plan, it requires, I think it had a maximum of two EVs parking spaces, and so this has just simply been amended to require compliance with the state law. But there are existing sustainability requirements that will not change. There's some energy efficiency, and some roofing requirements and a few other items as well.
I think there's just nothing to do with the amendment, but it says New Jersey Department of Energy, but should that be DCA? And it says number one, the most recently adopted energy standards by New Jersey Department of Energy. It's just a typo, I think.
Oh, in the original plan?
Yeah. Because there is no Department of Energy. I don't know if that really matters, just.
I see that.
It'd be DCA.
Well, it's not something that's subject to, to this particular amendment. If the planning board has a comment, if, if that's potentially incorrect language, it's probably worth noting so that you have that information in case you need to make an interpretation at the time of site plan.
Because it would just be community affairs.
Community affairs?
Department, if the energy standards are governed by New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, PPU has a role, but if it's about code, it'd be DCA. I mean, if you're referring back to this, it should just be accurate.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
I'm still concerned about the number of dwelling units that we're talking about. We have no particular goal in, in the city, and we won't know until next year what the state is going to require. But we don't know how many units we already have. So we have no idea as to the correlation between the two. And we talked a few months ago about the home plate area and a couple of other developments on Memorial. And at that time, you were pretty certain that our 2015 to 2025 obligation was satisfied. And while you didn't want to speculate as to what comes next year, you felt pretty comfortable with what we had at that time going into next year. Now we're adding another 100 and some units, and we're adding another 21 or 24, whatever the number is, of affordable units. This is kind of an overkill when we don't really know what our obligations are at this point.
Are 120 units affordable?
I'm sorry?
Are 120 units you just mentioned affordable? Or is that the gross amount of units?
No, I think you said 21 more affordable units. That's roughly the set aside for this.
21 of them are.
Oh, I thought you said 120. My error, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Maybe I did.
All right, okay. Okay, your intention was 21?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I mean, it just seems at this point, next year, this may be a very valid amendment, but at this point, this year, just seems premature. As a point, what's your comments on?
I think that this redevelopment plan, this amendment, much less the original, is not intended to strictly meet the city's affordable housing obligation. This is a redevelopment plan that, yes, it's intended to provide affordable housing because the city has an affordability problem, but its sole purpose is, unlike a lot of communities, is not to just simply meet a number and be done with it. And so I think that the desire or the requirement for affordable housing in this plan really transcends the city's affordable housing obligation. The city is, and just for context, the city has a zero-unit new construction obligation, affordable housing obligation, not because, it's not a recognition that we have so much affordable housing that exists in the city. Instead, it's recognition of the city's status as a qualified urban aid municipality. And so it's, it was a decision from the state that goes back 40 years ago or so that found that the state's urban areas that meet certain requirements, including Asbury Park, should not be burdened with an additional affordable housing obligation because, in particular at that time, they were housing the majority of low and moderate income folks. And the problem at that time was, and yes, to some extent certainly continues, but the problem at that time was an inability of folks of modest or low means to move out of the cities, out of the cities and into the suburban areas that offered better quality schools, housing, and, and many other things as well. Now, if you fast forward, while the city, this city continues to have significant challenges with the income of its residents, one of the other things that it has, even though we continue to have this problem, we have an affordability and a gentrification problem. And so redevelopment plans like this are not intended to just simply address a number and, and be done. Many communities are interested in doing as little as possible, addressing the number and moving on. Here, this is really about, yes, encouraging redevelopment of a long vacant property, but it's also about bringing housing and affordable housing to the community to help address these issues that exist regardless of what our affordable housing number is.
But seven years ago, when we adopted the last master plan, the city had determined that along this corridor, we needed commercial space. And now we're getting a proposal to change that. And I don't think anything has changed since that master plan revision back in 17.
Well, you know, one thing that I do want to point out is the, the 2018 plan, it permitted retail, restaurant, and office uses, as well as, of course, the, the residential. But it did not require those uses. And so a plan built pursuant to the 2018 plan may have been similar to what's being presented this evening in the sense that it, there's nothing in this adopted plan that would prevent it a 100% residential building from being constructed.
Don't speak out, please.
I thought that.
It is a permitted.
Proposed in the 2018 approval that there was, and I forget how many square feet of commercial space, but there was commercial space allocated, and now we're changing that requirement.
There was commercial space permitted, yes, that's true.
But it wasn't allocated, it was permitted.
Correct.
Was it required?
No, that's my, that's my point, is a permitted use, not a required use.
I think it should stay in.
It's a, it's a, sorry, sorry. It's a weird lot when you look at the, the city, like the zoning map, right? It's kind of stuck between R1, R3, and, and like industrial. It's a, it's a strange little lot.
Yeah, it's a transition.
Yeah, yeah.
So to that point, Mike, thank you for bringing that up. Do you mind, do you have a zoning map available?
I can bring one up for folks.
Just, I think, you know, it'd be helpful for everybody here. So this site is technically, the underlying zoning is the light industrial.
And I should note that this redevelopment, I'm sorry, just one point that I didn't make before.
It was done before.
Is, is that, I'm sorry, this is the old one, is that the redevelopment plan is an overlay. And so as a result, the LI district technically remains in place. Thank you, James.
So I have a particular thing about that. Now, adjacent to this redevelopment property, there is one single lot that you'll be orphaning, and it's a non-conforming residential use in the light industrial zone, is that right?
Hold on, one, I'm sorry, one second.
So while we're getting, while we're waiting for it to come up, so the zones that surround this are light industrial, which does not permit industrial, or does not permit residential, correct? The R3 zone has what density? I can tell if I just look. It's 50 units per acre, okay? The B zone, adjacent to the. The B zone, adjacent to the east and not quite the west, but kind of, that has a density of 40 units per acre. And the R1 zone doesn't really have a density per acre, but you could get eight if you did some quick math, right?
It's approximately six.
Yeah, six to eight. And so this one's being developed at 80 units per acre. And in the plan, it says this is supposed to be a transition between higher density and lower density uses. But the fact is, it's the highest density of anything that surrounds it. So that's one point. And then the second point is, is that a non-conforming residential use in the industrial zone in that orphan lot there?
I would presume so, but I haven't looked into the zoning of that site.
I would absolutely encourage you to include them in the redevelopment plan, not to give them more density or anything, but to, you know, but why would you just orphan them? As the only, you know, they're essentially non-conforming.
The recommendation is to include it in the redevelopment plan rather than include it in the R1 district?
Yeah, but that's not happening now, right?
But it's not within the redevelopment, it's a rezoning nonetheless.
It shouldn't be left as a non-conforming use between a redevelopment plan and a conforming zone.
Right.
So. But you can't do that without us redoing the zoning. We would have to actually move the zoning line for that one. Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Mayor and council would have to amend the ordinance.
Yeah. Or the council could include that parcel in. And not necessarily to create, you could give different regulations to that lot that make them essentially a conforming residential use capable of taking advantage of an EDU, for example, which, you know, just sort of making them lightly conforming while not conforming.
You'd have to go through the process of finding that to be an area in need of redevelopment.
No, I think we would be acceptable because this is, the redevelopment plan is pursuant to the citywide rehabilitation area. But I do think, I appreciate the concern that we've got this isolated, non-conforming lot. I do think rather than crafting standards in the redevelopment plan, I would rather work to put them in the zoning district that is consistent with the neighboring lot, the R1 district, and then they would have the same rights as, I think, what we're, it's the same result.
But you'd also have to make sure that they're comfortable with you essentially downzoning their property. Because that person can sell to a tannery or, you know, a horse glue factory, whatever, you know, like, right? Right. And you could essentially have a chemical factory located between this new building. They could.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah. But I mean, so I agree, though. This is, you know, now that we're looking at the area, this is an opportunity to highlight and make recommendations to adjust zoning that has been triggered. You know, the thought process has been triggered by this. I think that's a great comment for the planning board to make, to try to bring that lot into conformity.
Right. And I think it could be done either by crafting special regulations that give them equivalent rights to their adjacent R1 neighbors in this redevelopment plan or by adjusting the zoning lines an hour later.
You know, I would hate, partially, I would hate to, first of all, I'm against these redevelopment plans in total because they understand the city's an area needing redevelopment and it's not spot zoning, but maybe spot zoning. But my real problem with it is, again, is because in a redevelopment zone, you can be exempt from school taxes. It's just simple math. The school budget will be what the school budget is. If you have 100 people paying for it versus 200 people paying for the school taxes, the 100 people will pay a higher percentage.
Dan, you're not saying that you're prejudiced against all redevelopment plans that come into play?
I'm not, I don't like expanding them.
Okay, because you don't want to say you're prejudiced against it or you'd be excluded.
So I would rather, you know, I mean, you could downzone them. It's not like downzoning them in anticipation of acquiring their property. Downzone property is a little tough.
So I think the orphaning of that lot is more concerning.
Okay.
The second is that, how did we arrive? This proposed plan, I'm trying to be careful about my language, allows a density of 80 units per acre, is that correct? 104 divided by 1.3?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, it's 81, I think.
Yeah, okay, we'll just call it 80. And so that's twice as much as what's allowed in the business zone. 60% more than what's allowed in R3. And 10 times more, 12 times more than what's allowed in the R zone. And so I'm concerned that that doesn't necessarily provide the transition that it claims to because it is not the transition. Everything else is transitioning from this to that. And so how did we arrive at 80 units per acre?
The process was looking at the original redevelopment plan and speaking with the new property owner who expressed concern about their inability to have the site developed. Property financials were not viable, essentially. And so discussion was, how can, if and how can the redevelopment plan be adjusted to ensure that the redevelopment plan provides for a viable development? And at that point, it was evaluated from the perspective of architecture, site function, et cetera, as opposed to a simple numerical exercise, as opposed to just looking at a number. It was really an effort to determine if the property, the proposed building, the proposed function of the site was appropriate for the area.
So who performed that analysis? Like, was, so, I just want to make sure I'm characterizing it correctly. There was an analysis performed on the financial equation necessary to make this a viable project?
No, that's not what I said. What I said was, yeah, we're working with the developer who's, who, there's a goal to have a long vacant property be redeveloped. We're working with the developer, property owner, who's indicated that the property is not viable under the existing redevelopment plan. And is there an opportunity to adjust it to ensure that the property is viable and it can be redeveloped?
Who determines the viability of the new plan?
We're working with the developer. There's a presumption, when you have a developer in support of a project, that the property, that the zoning for the site is realistic and that it's viable.
So I don't want to belabor it or be fractious. But did the city perform the analysis of financial viability?
No, no, that's not been done. If there's a pilot request, it's certainly a financial analysis would be done at that point. But I think that's a different analysis than what you're referring to.
Has there been a pilot request for this site?
It's my understanding a pilot will be requested, but there's been no official action, no analysis in support of this particular plan.
So we anticipate that the potential developer needs a two-time zoning. It's hard to say because it's industrial. I'm just looking at the kind of zoning density around it. More than twice as much of most of what's around it. But then we'll also be requesting a pilot to make the project viable.
I would assume that they'll ask, but I can't represent specifics or, to be honest, represent that the city will grant it.
They may, Brett Brownfield credits as well.
They may, I don't have that detail.
Eric, if I may, I would like you to clarify something from a very interesting point that you brought up. You indicated that this is a transition area from what, where are you getting that from?
From what to what?
From the higher density to lower, you said this is a transition location?
That's, I believe.
I'm sorry?
I said...
Well, where does that information come from? Master plan, where does it come from?
Well, I believe the goal of the redevelopment areas is to provide a transition between, I guess, the kind of industrial, commercial character and higher density zones on one side of the site to a lower density on the other. Like, we typically see that. I mean, and there's all sorts of, the things you brought about in your, the points you brought up from the master plan, if you don't mind.
Yeah. I'm all digital, so I'm sorry.
Right, no, no, that's totally fine, I appreciate it.
I understand where you're coming from.
You're saving the same money. And it's just getting to the point that if it's supposed to be consistent with surrounding character, exceeding the surrounding character doesn't necessarily feel consistent or transitional or melding one to the other. This will be larger in density than anything that surrounds it by multiples.
It would be larger in density than the lofts, right?
Yeah, there are 32 units in the lofts, I just looked it up.
Yeah, and, you know, let me clarify.
And there are 160.
Okay.
Like, what, I really think that you should have looked at zoning, the popping up, the zoning here. It's not, you just, the zoning, correct? So it's not just a special, but, you know, like, why doesn't this, why isn't this in the same fashion in terms of density as the lofts closest to you?
They're originally higher. So it's interesting that on the parcels to the east, for the three blocks between Third and Asbury, there are only six residential units. And so we're going, like, nothing along Memorial to a very high density, to the lowest potential density. So it just feels like there's a lot of, you know...
You know, I think, and that's one of the things that, I mean, I appreciate the commentary about the density of surrounding area, but one of the, one of the things that I see in this neighborhood is a huge diversity. So yes, we have the single-family homes, and maybe I'll bring up a larger area in a second. But yes, we have the single-family homes directly to the rear. We have the lofts to the right, right on the screen, and the commercials, what's that?
And APHA housing.
I'm sorry?
APHA housing.
Yes, yeah, and that's exactly my point. So in addition to these immediate surrounding uses, which range from four to the one story, depending on which building we're talking about, as you look at the much, as you pan out, and I can show this if the board would like, to another two blocks or so surrounding the area, you see a much larger diversity in housing types and building heights as well, with buildings that go up to, I want to say, eight stories for the Robinson Towers. Yeah, eight stories, we've got Lumley Homes at six stories, Comstock Court at seven stories. And so I appreciate, that's a little bit different than density itself, but...
The form of those buildings is quite different.
It is, but my point is that there's significant diversity in the area. And this is not an area that is simply, say, a single-family district that has one building that's the odd man out. This is an area of the city that really has a variety of land uses ranging from the single families to things that are more industrial in nature, to a supermarket, to much taller apartment buildings, to modestly, or similar height townhouse or condo buildings, to single-family homes. And so the, I think that's an important consideration as you think about the character of the area and whether or not you think this building fits. It's, the story is told not just by the frontages that abut the site, but really by, I would say, the surrounding blocks to the property.
But should, should one of the considerations that this planning board take into account looking at this amendment, is the financial viability of this project?
No.
So we should not?
We don't get into finances, ever.
Exactly my point, Jack. In other words, what I'm saying is, we shouldn't really be concerned with the developer's financial needs.
We shouldn't even be talking about it.
I don't disagree, but if asked why we had, why we engaged with the developer, I want to share the honest reason.
Well, what I'm thinking of is that if it's not financially viable for the developer this year, maybe three or four years down the road, it might be. And in the meantime...
That's exactly what I'm trying to avoid. We shouldn't be discussing the finances of the project. We shouldn't be discussing that. We shouldn't speculate anything. Obviously, if there's a private, I'll go out on a limb here. Obviously, if there's a private developer that comes before the council and asks for an amendment to a plan and they want to construct a project, economics are always going to be the bottom line, okay? They're always going to be part of the bottom line because no developer's going to develop something that they can't make a profit on.
But that information was derived from me asking a question about how we arrived at this density.
I understand, I understand. But I'm saying, shouldn't say if they're going to, it might be more viable in three years from now and all that. We should stick to planning issues. We all know in the background, the finances are the driver of these things, you know?
My comment, Jack, was going to be that maybe this would be a great site for a park or a ball field at this point.
Yeah, but we, that's not before us and that's not, our job is to look at the master plan and relevant.
We've heard a lot of comments, and they're good comments. I actually think this has been a great discussion. But when it comes down to what we have to do tonight is, the city council asked us to review this and give them recommendations. So, and for the sake of, and we're going to have to hear from the public.
Absolutely, you still have many things to go and characterize this.
For the sake of being more productive, we made a lot of comments. Are there any kind of more concrete suggestions that we would want to give to the council?
Well, we're supposed to be reviewing consistency with the master plan, and that's our goal, right?
Yeah, that's the primary goal.
Yeah, I think these questions do get directly to that.
We can go beyond that, but we don't get into irrelevant jobs that we don't get, issues we don't decide.
Consistency with the master plan, like, how is this consistent with a master plan that tells us?
Or inconsistent.
It's not, how is this consistent with the master plan that tells us that the projects we undertake should be providing reasonable transitions between existing neighborhood character and new development? Which is, if you don't mind pulling up?
Which plan?
The things you...
The master plan?
Yes, listed from the master.
And that was the point of my inquiry.
Sure, and build development complements the context and qualities of adjacent neighborhoods with an appropriate scaled mass and character. So it's up to us to decide whether or not we think it does that.
Exactly.
So the second thing I have a question about, which is about transportation and traffic. At this density, has there been an estimate of the number of cars associated with this site? And meaning, there are how many parking spaces provided?
It's 1.2 spaces per unit.
130-ish, I counted.
Yeah.
So it's 130 parking spaces. Has anyone estimated the number of cars likely to be associated with the site for the purpose of parking demand?
No, there's been no study.
Okay. Has there been an estimate of new trips, ins and outs, traffic that would be generated by the site?
No.
And has there been an estimate in account of traffic existing in the area? Car counts, pedestrian counts, bike counts, and crashes?
No.
Okay. So it seems hard for us to determine consistency in none of these things, but there are many things in the master plan that deal with pedestrian safety. I think there's something in here about walkability or, well, this was the other thing, about the organic sort of development pattern. So that speaks specifically to the setbacks on second and first. And then my concern would be that with 104 units, that there should at least be an estimate of how many likely cars would need to be parked on and off site so that the neighbors can be aware of what the likely impact is going to be on them, as well as an understanding of the number of trips. And to that point, how did we arrive at First Avenue for the car entrances?
First Avenue was selected because it seems to be the best location, given the fact that we have residences along Second facing the lofts. And so the idea of simply not adding vehicles coming out facing those homes in Langford is a rather narrow street, First faces commercial uses, and that was deemed to be the most appropriate location.
Langford, however, has no neighbors, none in the foreseeable future, correct? You're essentially looking at a blank wall on one side and an empty lot on the other, which are all zoned light industrial.
Yes.
However, the, like, there are residents, residential properties on both First and Second.
Right. But there's commercial, but to be fair, I mean, I don't want anybody to think that the, the driveway exiting the property is facing residential units instead it's facing commercial, the commercial uses along First. And so if there were an access drive along Langford, there's no reason to think that folks would not exit off of Langford and go up First or Second.
Absolutely correct. However, there are two stop signs on Langford, meaning that the traffic is likely and should be the slowest on Langford. Is that correct?
I, I would assume so, yeah.
So it seems to me from a safety perspective, the slowest traffic entry point would be on Langford rather than the free-flowing traffic and bike lanes that it crosses on First and Second. And I would think that the council should consider relocating traffic towards Langford, which is much more likely to remain a, a street with this industrial mix character than the side streets of First and Second, which are extremely residential in character.
I think that the board certainly has the power to make that recommendation. Um, you got, if, if there's a majority of the board that wants to see the access shifted from, uh, from First to, to Langford, certainly the board should make that consideration. Um, I can tell you that that had been, uh, reviewed. I don't want to suggest it was a, an access study by a traffic professional, but it had been reviewed and the concern cited was, uh, the narrowness of Langford and just the, uh, uh, improved ability to, uh, to access First. And part of what you can see from the concept plan is that there's also increased setback of the building to the cartway as opposed to just simply from the property line along First. And so not only do you have a wider street with a bit more maneuverability, but you also have greater site distance as you're exiting the building.
There are multiple examples of other driveways within feet of Langford across First Avenue. The Partner Engineering Site has, I believe, two different entrances onto Langford with no setback and similar site distance.
I'm not telling you it's inherently unsafe. I'm just sharing the reasons why it was supported to First Avenue. But like I said, if the, if the board thinks that that's an appropriate change, you should make that comment for certain.
And I, and I think that it's just, we're looking for consistency, right? So we're doing, we're creating, we're, we're opining on a redevelopment plan. And while they are one off here and one off there, I feel like we should at least be looking for consistency among, amongst them to some extent, and also with the master plan. And the master plan has much in there about protecting the pedestrian character of residential neighborhoods. If we have the opportunity to put the driveway on a street that is and is likely to remain light industrial or of commercial character, that seems a better choice. And it has no bike lanes, that seems a better choice.
Is that over the Lofts, two or like?
It's an entrance.
Yes.
Way enter from that exit.
Yeah, yeah. Got to run it by the rules.
Sure, yes. There is an entrance.
We'll make sure you get a chance to make that comment.
There's one on Langford and one on Second. It's ins on one side, outs on the other.
My concern with doing the driveway on Langford, we could, it's about thirty-five feet wide. Uh, bringing all these, we enjoy up to four units. We're now a lot of cars in the street. If they're parked on both sides, usually you kind of figure like seven and a half, eight feet for a parked car. You're going to have like a nineteen feet for two-way traffic. And usually you want, you know, minimum will be like ten feet travel. So it gets real narrow with cars turning in that driveway and also kind of going down the street. That's the only concern with Langford, uh, street being on the driveway. And the, that was right, setbacks on First and Second aren't better than Langford, but more the width than that.
However, driveways exist up and down.
Sure, yeah.
And, and they work for, built for literal eighteen-wheelers from the laundry and from the grocery store. Okay. So I would recommend that, you know, we ask for a, you know, reconsideration of how access is provided to the site to maintain the pedestrian character of the side streets on First and Second.
Are we recommending pulling back the footprints from First Avenue?
I also think that's
Yeah, well, the way this should work is that everybody will have their comments voted on by the board collectively.
So I was going to say.
Board votes in favor of will be included in the recommendations.
I, I feel like we are segueing into comments, which is, which is a good thing, but, um, before we do that, yeah, we haven't heard from the public. So, um, what we're going to do is anyone from the public who wants to ask questions of Beth about her testimony, you can ask her any questions you like. This is not the time, if you have comments where you want to express to us your feelings about this, this is not that yet. We'll get to that, we promise, we'll get to that. But this is if you have questions for Beth about her testimony. Um, now is the time to go up to the microphone. Um, tell us your name and your address, and you can ask Beth anything about what she has testified.
Do me a favor, please.
Yeah.
Now, are you using your phone for notes or are you communicating with somebody?
I, my notes are in my phone.
Perfect.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Now, before you ask the questions, would you please identify yourself and where you live?
Yes, my name is Sonia Spina. I live at 1,001 Second Avenue in the Lofts Building. I'm also the Communications Director for the City of Asbury Park.
Oh, okay.
Um, hi, Beth. Um, I have some questions for you, which, um, were in the information that was, um, shared with us, which I don't think you discussed, but can you explain to us, um, the amendment talks about podium parking and what that changes?
Yeah, I would be happy to. So podium parking, let me just, actually, this is a good image for it. Podium parking is, uh, it's just a term used for, uh, surface parking that is below a building. So, uh, if you can, you can see in this plan right here, the, the cars parked, those are parked in a, uh, just essentially like an asphalt, you know, surface parking lot with the building. The building is a podium above it. So maybe the name podium parking, which is commonly used, is perhaps not the most descriptive because I guess the building itself is on the podium, but, but that's what it means. That the building, the residential units are generally speaking above the surface parking. As opposed to a parking garage that you would certainly up on multiple stories.
But some of this parking will be open?
Yes, and this is another, yeah. So if you see on this picture, uh, for example, along First, you'll see the parking exceeds the limits of the building. And then if I go back to the concept plan right there, um, if you, if you look at the back row of parking spaces on the right side of the screen, you see a line that runs through it, if you can see from back there, that's the line of the building. And so the building, so basically a portion of those back parking spaces on the right and then the back parking spaces on the left with the access is what exceeds the building.
God, and those will be facing the houses?
So, yes, so, um, the way that the parking is oriented on the three sides, uh, Langford to the bottom of the screen, obvious, maybe not obviously, but those vehicles will face the street. On Second, uh, on the right side of the screen, there are no vehicles facing the street. They either face, uh, to the, uh, to, to the, uh, to the rear or towards the lobby area, towards Langford. And then on, on First Avenue, the vehicles, in that, in that case, yes, they face the street. And then to the rear, closest to Langford, they face the rear property line. But I do want to highlight once more that required in the plan is, uh, is a five-foot buffer, but also a solid fence along the rear property line.
A solid fence?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, um, it looks like they're asking for a change from the, uh, maximum, I should have brought my readers with me.
They're on the bed.
They're, they're not, actually.
You're online?
No, I'm okay, thank you. Um, so they're asking for an increase, so five floors, right? But it says with the exception of common areas depicted on Appendix B, so how high will those portions of the building be?
It, so the redevelopment plan requires, oh, that's the wrong way. Come on. There we go. Sort of, hold on, let me just, I'm going to show you the building height requirement in here. There we go. So the building height is fifty-five feet excluding the, uh, excluding penthouse mechanicals and elevator stairs and bulkheads. Uh, I don't have a, a specific requirement, but we have that maximum height. And I also want to note elsewhere in the plan, it also requires that any, uh, mechanical equipment, et cetera, be located centrally to the roof of the building and then also screened if it can be viewed.
Okay. And then my last question is for the increase in lot coverage that they're asking for, which looks like from sixty-five, seventy-five to eighty, ninety, is that, um, a common request from all the developments that are coming through to increase the coverage on their properties?
I would say anytime you have, uh, a development that's seeking additional intensity, whether it's residential density or, sorry, I just want to make sure I picked up. Whether it's residential density or for a commercial property, they're looking for more retail area, for example, that's typically coupled with an expansion of the building cover and the lot cover. So it's, to the extent that you have, that the city or any town has developers coming in looking to do something, uh, I would say it's very common for them to request increases to those measurements.
Okay. Um, and I keep my comments to myself till later, right?
I think so. Yep.
Sarah, please state your name for the record and your address.
Jordan Modell, 1,001 Second Avenue, like most of us from the Lofts. Um, so there's a few things that I wanted to, um, address.
Oh, yes, you're going to ask questions?
Yes, I, yep, 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 yep. Well, I wanted to clarify something, right? Because if you have something on here and it may or may not be correct, can I, can I clarify that?
Please.
Please.
No worries, okay. So the, the previous plan, um, the developers, the previous developers actually did come and show renderings. Um, it was, I just wanted to clarify, it was four stories that were proposed, not five. So I understand was adopted, but that's not was proposed. The commercial space, they actually had two restaurants and two retail stores there that were proposed and rendered. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that that has changed dramatically. To the comment that you had before on that this is very much a mixed use area, you had a, uh, there was a slide that you had up on
Maybe the aerial photograph?
Historical, was it, you know, the gentleman with the black T-shirt? I can't remember, I'm terrible at names, sorry, sir. Um, so one of the things that hasn't been brought up in relation to parking, just into your comment, is both Lumley and, what's the other name of the tower?
Comstock Court or the Robinson Tower?
Robinson, right, okay. Does not have a lot of vehicles, right? Their parking lot, there's not a lot of vehicles associated with those.
If you're going to testify, you've got to be sworn in.
Okay.
And it's not the time for testimony.
Got it.
You're going to get your chance, but I, you've got to start asking some questions.
Okay, sorry. So, uh, first question, contaminated. What type of contamination is there that we just found out?
I believe there were underground storage tanks, but I really don't have additional information on that.
Okay. Second, um, at one point, they were saying that, um, to cover the 1.2 parking spaces with the hundred and thirty parking spaces, they were going to double up on parking spaces. In other words, they were going to have, you know, one on the bottom, one on the top. Um, is that still the case?
No, I think you're, I think you might be referring to when they came to the council meeting in October 2023. That had been part of their proposals, uh, as well as increased number of housing units. As a result of that meeting, the density has come down and with that has been the elimination of the parking stackers, as they're called.
Got it. Okay. Um, I'll save the rest to the comments.
Yeah, well, you'll get your chance, we'll make sure.
Hi, I'm Dave Swanson from the Lofts as well. And my question has to do with the rendering that you showed, and again, talking about the setback that, um, Eric was pointing out. Um, not that rendering, the, yeah, so you, from the picture, it looks as though there's a grassy area sidewalk, which I assume is the, the, the city's right-of-way. But there also shows another grassy area before the actual building itself. So if you're saying that on that street, there's a zero footprint, I'm confused by the rendering because it doesn't appear to me as though it's a zero footprint with the building if there is that grassy area. So which am I to believe, the statement or the picture?
Uh, both, but let me explain why it's confusing. Because I, I appreciate your concern. It doesn't, it, this picture fundamentally does not look like a zero-foot setback.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, but you're, I think a lot of your assumption is correct. So what we see here is where you can see the street tree there, that's certainly within the city right-of-way. I think as folks would accept, uh, expect, the sidewalk is within the city right-of-way as well, as you would expect. What's also in the city right-of-way that you would not expect is the area, they're showing it with, uh, between the sidewalk and the building, sort of plantings in that area. That's also actually within the city right-of-way.
Okay, so how big a space is, how?
It's going to result in a, a setback of, I want to say, twenty-five-ish feet.
Okay.
I think it's, I want to say it's noted as twenty-seven on their plan from the cartway.
It's twenty-seven on, uh, on the appendix on the rendering.
Thank you, yeah.
And how wide is this sidewalk?
From the curb.
Just to give me some context, so, because I'm, I don't do this every day, so.
Yeah, I, I think the sidewalk in this area is maybe four feet or so, five feet, five feet.
Can you go to the site plan again? Because because the setback is always measured from the property line. We don't measure setbacks from the curb.
Right, that's why that's so much of that land is within the city right-of-way.
That's the sidewalk in there.
Here.
Yeah, okay.
And there's a two-foot setback from the property line. Everything to the north is technically in the city right-of-way. So it's got a two-foot setback on Second. Am I correct? And a two-foot setback on First.
Okay.
There is an anomaly here in which the houses on Second are closer to the street than the houses on First.
I totally understand and appreciate that comment. That part I understood. Thank you.
You good? Questions are answered?
That, that's my question, so I'll save my comments.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Hi, uh, Mike Sedano, uh, Fourth Avenue. Question.
Yes.
How many units are there?
The plan permits a hundred and four.
And how many parking spaces?
It's 1.2 parking spaces per unit, so roughly a hundred and thirty or so.
So will the developer be restricting renter? I mean, are these condos renters buying, I don't know?
Uh, I'm anticipating for rent.
So will the developer be restricting the residents to 1.2 cars per unit?
Uh, well, certainly not 1.2 cars per unit. Um, how, whether the, uh, developer puts something into the lease is something, is not an answer I know right now. That would certainly be subject to planning board discussion as well as any redevelopment agreement if the, if the city felt appropriate.
So I guess the question becomes, what happens to all those people who rent in the hundred and four units and have two cars? Where do those extra cars park?
Well, some of those extra cars might be, uh, will certainly be accommodated within the building for those units that don't have two cars. Um, there are, one of the things that the, the board and the public might find interesting is the breakdown of the market rate units, for example. So there's ten studios, twenty-six one-bedrooms, fifteen one-bedrooms with a den, and, uh, thirty-two two-bedrooms. And so given the, the number of studios and the one-bedrooms, I think that we're likely to see, uh, vehicle ownership, uh, for at least those units, certainly below two, two vehicles per unit, that's going to create space within the parking garage. And yes, to your point, or I'm sorry, I'm assuming your point, there may also be, uh, folks that are using, uh, on-street parking as well.
On-street parking on Langford, First and Second?
Presumably.
Do you live on First, Second, or Langford?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public for Ms. Writness?
Move to a public comment?
Yep.
Second? Did you second that motion?
Jeremy second, okay.
One favor.
What if we filed something else? Like another question? Like what do we get to eat?
We'll allow you here, right? So, you know, in, in other redevelopment plans throughout the city, there are So, you know, in, in other redevelopment plans throughout the city, there are public realm and sort of public right of way requirements placed on the potential developer. And so I'm curious if there were any conversations to transition some of the parking to head-in parking, perhaps on First or Second, in the area of the site to increase parking supply.
That discussion has not been had.
Okay. Public comment. So this is the part where you guys are in public.
Well, you've got to get sworn in because you've got to give us your opinions, it's got to be based on a belief to be the truth, and your address, and I'll.
Sorry, Jeff, one second. There's no other witnesses, right?
Oh, good, just me.
Just, okay.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Salute, swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name again for the record and spell it and give us your address.
David Swanson, spelled S.W.A.N.S.O.N., like chicken broth.
Thank you.
And I live on 1001 Second Avenue.
Great. You got the floor.
Okay, first thing I want to say is I want to thank the board. I watch you guys for every single meeting. I love your passion and I love what you do for this city. Eric, you especially as both a citizen and as a board member, you speak to my heart when you talk about the city and you guys are terrific. So thank you very much for all of your effort. That's the first thing I want to say. The second thing, I know that we just had another meeting about Fourth and Fifth Avenue and the vacant lot there, and there was a lot of talk about the same types of questions about the density, about the parking. With that picture that's shown up there, the one thing that I kind of question is, you can see that there's a tractor trailer parked on Langford Street there, there's one parked with a cab attached and there's one parked without a cab attached. And I don't know whether or not that's legal parking on Langford, but that consumes a lot of parking spaces. And I've taken pictures of it, I was going to bring it, but my printer ran out of ink, so I didn't have enough to show you guys. Luckily, it's right here in the rendering. Those kind of things, if we had a little bit more, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if it's legal or not legal for the laundry to be parking their trailers on, on the road, but if it is legal, maybe we should consider that and that might relieve some of the parking concerns that I know everyone has. But the density issues are a concern and I especially feel the same way that Eric does about the setback and the importance of lining the building up with at least the front porches of the houses that run along First Avenue there. I think that that's an important part of it and that's why my question was about the, the setback and so forth. So that's all I have as far as comment goes, but thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Salute, swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name again for the record, spell it and give us your address.
Sonia Spina, S.P.I.N.A. My address is 1001 Second Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate being noticed, even though it was a hard notice, I'm glad we got them and I had a chance to come and listen to this. I feel like I'm going to say a lot of things that other people are going to say and I'll, I'll be fast. The density really concerns us. As someone mentioned, the Lofts is 32 units and it does feel like it fits nicely into the neighborhood there. I, I don't feel like we are an overwhelming building with an overwhelming, overwhelming amount of traffic. I worry about adding so many units in the middle of our neighborhood. The parking, thank you for explaining that earlier, I didn't really understand what that meant. One of our concerns is the amount of cars and lights going into everybody's units around the four sides of the building, so just want to keep that in mind. The, one thing about, you know, I, I laugh every time I hear the 1.2, which, you know, I know James is going to come over and talk to me tomorrow about it, but it, it, it just never makes any sense to me. Like, every single person in our building has a car, unfortunately, they drive all over the place to work and back. You know, the entire point is we try to park and then we try to ride our bikes everywhere on the weekends. But there are still cars, like every single person that's going to be in that building is going to have a car and they are going to have their friends come visit, they're going to have their babysitters, they're going to have their housekeepers, they're going to have everybody coming in and it's an extraordinary amount of traffic. And I just want to keep that in mind as you are deciding what to do with all of these cars and where you are going to park them. The height of the building, I still want to understand that because I, you know, again, the, on First and Second Avenue, you know, we walk around our neighborhoods all the time, the view is beautiful, it is so nice to see everybody on their front porches, we are raising our kid here, we have so many kids in the neighborhood, and I just love the feeling of walking up and down the street and seeing everyone out. I don't like the setbacks that basically cover people's porches and it feels like a big brick wall that you are putting at the end of our neighborhood. And that, I'll leave it everything to everyone else, thank you.
Let's get the gentleman sworn in. Sir, please raise your right hand. Salute, swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name again for the record, spell it and give us your address.
Sure.
You can put your hand down.
Okay. Jordan Modell, Modell Store, Jordan Second Rate Country, Second Rate Store, 1001 Second Avenue, at the Lofts.
Yeah, that's your.
Fair enough, okay. I know you want to start the thing again, I'm not going to take it. Actually, basically, ditto to Sonia, thank you very much for articulating that. I just wanted to take it a little bit further about our concerns on height, parking and density. The main one is actually, I'd like to cover a little bit more on parking and what parking is like now and what parking would like be like in the future. One of the things I think that is not being taken into account, as a lot of people pointed out, is the business, the washing, the people that are washing the sheets, right? Those people need to park somewhere and I don't know how far they're going to be chased by the parking that's going to be taken up by this incredibly dense building and as Sonia correctly pointed out, their babysitters, their friends and everybody else who's going to be parking. If you go on the Second Avenue, that whole area right now, you will find a parking spot, but it's not like there's no parking whatsoever. I mean, it's not like you can always, always find a parking spot, especially in, on high season. The second thing, having been, it being on the parking committee that's pointed out is, these people can charge whatever they want, as far as I understand, for parking. So for example, on the one on Lake Drive, right, their parking lot is, James, please correct me, something like 25% empty because they're charging, what is it, $200 or $300 a month for parking and people can't afford to pay that or don't want to pay that. So they will actually be forced out onto the street too. So it's not even that all of the units there will take advantage of the parking there if they charge exorbitant amounts for parking. So it is really creating a tough situation for the neighborhood for parking, for accidents, we've been having a lot more accidents on Second Avenue. The second thing is, as far as the developers go, whatever, he speaks with forked tongue, which is meaning that they keep saying one thing and then I keep hearing another thing. And just as a citizen, and my worry is that if you approve this, all of a sudden they may come back to you and say, you want to know what? I still can't afford it, I need X more, or I need X more things from you. What truly, truly worries me is that they have not proven their financial need. I understand it's not part of this conversation, but it's the whole point of why they're going from 80 to 104. There's no proof on there for that, nor has there been a parking study. I don't understand how we could possibly move forward with this without doing a major parking study. Thank you very much.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Salute, swear affirm.
I swear.
Okay. Well, the testimony that you've got here is matter of the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it and give us your address.
Mike, Mike Sedano, S.O.D.A.N.O., 1004th Avenue.
Thanks, Mike.
Here we go again. For the last six weeks, we've been voicing our opinion on density, okay? Density at 1201 Memorial and now we're hit with density on Langford First and Second. I don't understand how density gets approved, how we get, how anyone can possibly say, we need 104 units. Yes, it's great that we're getting development, but why do we need 104 units on a, in a, in a neighborhood like this? Number two, the parking, okay, I won't go into all that. Number three, the setback, okay? You're putting this building right up to the sidewalk. Have you seen the waterfront lately, okay? And the buildings in the waterfront that are right up to the curb, right up to the sidewalk? It looks like mini New York down there and it's just going to continue. So I don't understand why we keep approving building right up to the sidewalk. Since I've been here in 2007, all I've heard in, in complaints about the waterfront redevelopment are, I'm sorry, we really can't do anything about that because that was all approved by an earlier planning board and an earlier city council. Well, in 10 years, you guys are going to get the blame for approving a project like this and 1201 Memorial because people are going to start complaining about the density again of those, of the units that are coming up. So I strongly urge you to relook at density, parking and, what did I say? Setbacks, okay? And somebody should do an impact study, okay? What is the impact of these developments in the neighborhood? Sure, you can count cars, but what's the impact? And there's got to be somebody who says the impact of 104 units and, and whatever the guy wants to be, you've approved for 1201 Memorial, has to have an impact on the neighborhood. We should be looking at that and being a little smarter about our decisions. Thanks.
Please raise your right hand. Salute, swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it and give us your address.
My name is Suzanne, S.U.Z.A.N.N.E., Marzocci, M.A.R.Z.O.C.C.H.I. And my address is 1001 Second Avenue.
Thank you.
The picture here of Langford doesn't show that occasionally there'll be a school bus parked, because I believe on the corner, there's a Board of Ed, like truck, maybe they keep plows or something there, but there's, there have been school buses as recently as last week. No one else, no one has mentioned that one block over and one block west is an elementary school. So we have a lot of children walking to school. I don't have children of school age, but I see a lot of children walking to school. And my concern is the impact on all the park, the cars that are going to be coming in, going, whether it's in and out of Langford, in and out of First, just the increase in the cars coming to, for the people who live in this building and the, the increase of traffic during the school hours. So, nobody's mentioned the school, that's just right around the corner. And I'm not even talking about the impact that the residents of the building may have on the school, good or bad. I don't, I don't know how filled the classrooms are, but I do see a lot of children walking to school. I mean, now it's summer, well, now they have summer school, but that's just my observation. I think there was one other thing. If, Mike, I have kind of a question, but an observation. If the entrance to the building is First Avenue, why is it considered the back of the building, the west side of the building, not Second Avenue? Which will have a fence, where the fence will go and a five-foot or whatever property line or buffer zone. And if the lobby is Second Avenue, most guests will be coming in and out, so they're most likely going to be parking, if there is parking, on Second. If the lobby's on Second Avenue there on the, on the north side of the building, that's where the guests will be most likely parking. And I'm not even sure if you can park on both sides of the street of Langford. I've only seen cars parked on the west side, not the, the east side. So, that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the public?
Motion to close. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. When you, in your deliberations now and your comments, my recommendation, approach this in the most logical way would be, give me some findings and then I need recommendations. So that we have both. These are our findings, these are our recommendations for, A, consistency with the master plan or inconsistency with the master plan and such other areas that you deem relevant.
When you say findings, what, what do you mean?
Well, you know, based on what you've, the presentation, let's say, for example, you find that, according, that it may not be consistent with the master.
Can you put those four things up here?
Yeah, it may not be consistent with the master plan and what, why you think it's not inconsistent. And then, you know, go right down the list of things that you find, like we find that we should have a transportation thing and then, then the recommendations would be, based on our findings, we recommend that the mayor and council consider these following requests for modifying and upgrading the potential project.
I think that the, asking for the increase in density is out of context of the call that is in the adjacent neighborhood, it's not the appropriate scale in the sense that we have a much higher density. Even the approved density is higher, you know, the surrounding areas and it's exacerbated by the request of an increase in density. And I think that the, the footprint on First Avenue, which is, we have the building going past the fronts of the vacation homes going west, makes it out of scale as well to the master.
I'm, I'm sorry, I interrupted. You're good. I sort of, a comment, I mean, I wanted to keep in mind that these are the master plan review items that were shared, but there are other elements that could be considered in terms of the master plan besides these. But one thing that we didn't really talk about much, but I think Sonia's comment brought it to light, is that the architecture does not lend itself to interacting with the neighborhood. So if that's a desirable characteristic, I mean, this type of architecture exists in plenty of places in the city, but to have a quality of interacting on the street, which that neighborhood does have a lot of interacting on the street now, this by having podium parking, which might be a necessity, I don't know. Yeah, there, I mean, it's definitely inward, in my opinion, inward-facing architecture. So it's, you go, you live there and it's sort of a, a community to itself in a sense because there's no, from the architecture that I see now, which I realize might change to some level, I don't see much that would make one want to interact with somebody on the street, which I think is a desirable quality in most places in the city. And, yeah, any of the inward-facing, it just concerns me that it's, it's very inward-facing architecture.
I'm going to come back to the setbacks. To me, when I, when I first looked at this plan, this was the first thing that jumped out at me, especially because this has come up in other plans. On First Avenue, it looks like the building is about setback with the prevailing setback of the houses. On Second Avenue, it's not. And just to think out loud, part of me is like, well, you know, if you look around the corner, if you look across Langford, you look on the kitty corner on First Avenue, there's buildings kind of all over the place. But I actually think Eric said it really well, which is, how do we, thinking forward, how do we, how do we make the city better? How do we restore the, the plan of the city? And if we have an opportunity here to restore the sightlines. And if we have an opportunity here to restore the sightlines along Second Avenue and kind of preserve some of the sightlines in the neighborhood, interactivity with the neighborhood, I think that's a recommendation worth making to the council. So my recommendation would be that we, you know, that the city consider making the setback on Second Avenue the prevailing setback of the single-family homes.
You mean First?
Yeah.
First Avenue.
Yep, everything I just said, switch it.
Yeah, no, 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 I get it. I just.
Everything I said, I said it backwards.
Okay, no, 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 just reference to Second Avenue. I got the rest.
I'm sorry, everybody.
I got the rest of it, we're good. Go down the line. Go ahead, Jim.
I also think that the permitted uses should not be changed from the original. I think that there should be some commercial uses in this building. I don't think it should all, should be all residential. And so I recommend that the, no changes be made in the original resolution.
Ask you a follow-up question, Jim. So in the original resolution, the commercial uses were not required, they were permitted?
Yes, but this amendment changes that. It says that on the ground floor, residential amenity space and parking. And basically, that eliminates the, excuse me, that eliminates the commercial use unless it's.
The possibility of commercial use. It eliminates the possibility of commercial use.
You know, I think the issue of commercial use here is not clear-cut because there are no true retail locations because it's industrial. So this isn't, you know, I guess, but within industrial uses, you could have car repair shops or, you know, machinery. So there is stuff that could be reasonably construed as retail. I don't think, I don't think a small retail stall or a cafe would be an unwelcome addition, but a necessary one, I wonder, because Memorial Drive, Main Street really serve that function within the local. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to contradict you in any way, Jim, I just, you know, it's more thinking out loud. Like, is this where an only residential use is needed? But something that was said about what makes the front of the building the front and what makes the back of the building the back, right? We're treating First Avenue like it's the back of the building because it has a drive, the drive aisle. And we're treating First Avenue like it's the front because it has the residential entrance. So it does have a very clear frontal direction, orientation towards First. And maybe having two residential lobbies on the corners, something like that. And the drive aisle in the middle on Langford could kind of create the sense that these are two, like it has two fronts, which is, the neighborhood has two sides. The mirror has two paces. Yeah, it, so there's, I think there's something to be said there. But I guess we have to get to the first point before we get to recommendations, which I think Dan was saying about, like, do we think this is consistent with the master plan? And I think that's a difficult question for us to first answer. And if it's yes, that's one thing. And if it's no, then we have a series of recommendations, which you agree, Jack?
Yes, but you elaborated on traffic and things like.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can talk also about those things. Yeah.
You had, you made some comments that you thought that it wasn't necessarily consistent with it.
Absolutely.
Because if we can take all of this, I'm gonna ask the board to vote on this, and then we will edit out what the board doesn't want collectively or, and keep in what the board does want.
Just a point of, I'm sorry, Eric, just a point of clarification. Jack, can the board still provide comments if they, recommendations, if they find it consistent with the master plan?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I thought, I thought so. I thought you, I thought you were saying no for. That's fine, okay.
But if we say no, I think the list is probably, potentially, a lot longer.
No, that's fine, I just want a clarification on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It cuts both.
Yeah. And I think from the perspective of transportation and parking, at the bare minimum, the developer should be required to conduct, and this is an important distinction, an impact study on the local network and parking demand in the neighborhood that will be created by, say, not simply how many cars drive up and down the street now, what more do we expect to be added? And what impact does that have on the surrounding neighborhood? What are the likely routes? What traffic calming elements are necessary to modify behavior? Is there, are there any regulatory things that need to be put in place, like right turn only or certain hours when you can move that way or that way? I don't know. Do we, do we need a four-way stop? Like, you know, what is the, what is the, what is the plan to manage the impact? And I just don't know that that's been answered.
And the, so the, just so I'm clear, because I'm probably gonna chat with the developer and certainly the council about this, is the recommendation to take the, the traffic impact study that the planning board would get at the time of site plan and instead basically submit that to council as part of the redevelopment preparation process?
Is that a traffic impact study, though?
I think that's, I mean, I think that's essentially. Well, a traffic impact study is how much traffic is gonna be generated by the project? What are the likely turning movements? Do those turning movements work? Has the level of service changed? What is the parking proposed? Does the parking work on the property?
That, you're saying that goes with site plan approval?
Yeah, I mean, that's the typical traffic impact study that the board would receive.
Then we have to establish standards that we have to apply. We don't have traffic impact standards that we apply. We only have the regulations.
No, but how can you, how can one, how can anybody assess whether or not it's, I don't wanna say consistent with the master plan because that's not it, but like, how can we assess anything if we don't understand what it's likely impacted?
You can't. I'm not saying you shouldn't have it. You hire traffic engineers, they perform certain studies, come back and make recommendations. But you, if it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think that prior to the passage of redevelopment plan, those things should be done.
That's all part of large-scale redevelopment, all developments. But if we can, okay, can we focus? Perhaps we can think about, what are the sections? Do we find it to be generally consistent with the master plan, the exception of X, Y, and Z, or what? I mean, I, I need to get that from the board. I can't create that for you.
I mean, I find it consistent from the perspective of meeting affordable housing goals. From many other perspectives, I do not find it consistent.
Okay. You don't have to give me.
No, I don't have to give you.
A litany of the saints, but you can give me a short.
Oh, yeah, so I think for my, for my perspective is the traffic and parking impacts, the setback, and relationship to surrounding neighborhoods and transition between higher density and lower density.
I got that, okay.
I would just say the creating pedestrian-friendly streets aspect is not, I don't see that happening with this plan.
Yeah, like the kind of level of activation.
Let me see if I can put this in lawyer-like fashion.
Public art.
Eric, could you say that, that you not approve, you don't take the 104 requests for this?
I think the plan is consistent with trying to meet our affordable housing goals. I sort of sidestepped whether 104 is the right number because I have no way of knowing.
How about, if I, let me catch this in these terms and see what the consensus is. You find, okay, it's pretty much in general of anyone who's made a comment that the density issue, it's too dense. It's gotta be elaborated upon, but it's too dense based on certain, the condition of the neighborhood, the transition of the zone, all, the zoning, all that sort of thing, okay? You also find that the setbacks are inconsistent with the prevailing setbacks within the neighborhood, especially along First Avenue.
And the organic or historic development factors.
Okay, okay, well, okay. And the articulation of the architecture is inconsistent with the street escapes in the neighborhood. One individual would like that the permitting, existing commercial uses be permitted to go, okay? The recommendations obviously would be the converse of these, that mayor and council consider increasing those setbacks on First Avenue. Ingress and egress, a traffic study in addition to a detailed traffic study, an impact study on the local, on the local street network.
I would call it a traffic impact network analysis.
A net, okay. However you wanna call it, that's fine. Because I'll, I'll expect comments from you when I send this resolution, okay? And best location for ingress egress, you're gonna need traffic counts, the impact on Langford with the commercial vehicles being parked at there. You need an extensive study that gives you, that addresses the issues that the board has raised, okay? And that, the council should consider that, okay? Have I missed anything?
I have one last thing to talk about.
Go.
The mess I did not bring up earlier is about the public art. I would encourage you to think less about murals and more about how the, the grassy areas might be used for something less paint-based, a sculpture, a statue, any.
So you, you want, you want site, you want very.
I mean, I don't know how specific it is in the plan. You're showing kind of murals, spressatura across the front.
So the, the plan requires the, the architecture be consistent, but not, not, certainly not the specific murals on the plan. Those are not mockups of what would be constructed. But the one thing I wanted to say is, I'm not sure if this is relevant because you were talking about the sculpture and other folks have talked about the, the activation, which is not an activation issue, but there is a provision in the plan that allows for the, the way the right-of-way and the frontage is designed to be at the planning board's discretion. So it, it doesn't address things like activation from the perspective of having a commercial use that is active on the street. But in terms of board discretion on how that right-of-way is treated, what, what goes there, whether it's art or street furniture for, you know, or plantings, that's subject to the board's discretion.
I really like that, Eric. I'm writing that down for when we get back to site.
What?
Sculptures.
Sculpture, yeah. We have so many lovely murals, we need a sculpture. We need a companion sculpture for all those lovely murals.
I have a practical question. Because it's, that area is in the city's right-of-way. When you just say the planning board has input or whatever the term that you just said.
Oh, yeah, we only have two setbacks.
When, because I know it's often an issue as to anything in the right-of-way maintenance and the city and everything. So in this case, the redevelopment plan is that different? Because usually, it's very limited what the city would want.
The redevelopment plan doesn't, doesn't disrupt or change the city's existing regulations, but in terms of how that right-of-way is treated is something that I think that the board can weigh in on. And to the extent that there's activities proposed within the right-of-way, developers will provide an easement to the city so that they can conduct activities or put structures there.
Any encroachment in the city right-of-way, mayor and council has to approve it.
But it's not an encroachment, like, so let's just say there were pedestrian bumpouts at the corners narrowing the crossing distance on First and Second. That's not an encroachment, that's just a, literally, just a different treatment of the system.
That's more of like a street design change that the developer might weigh in on. Maybe, I don't wanna get into how that might work from a relationship between the city and the developer. That's sort of a different issue. I mean, if the area between the sidewalk and the building, if the planning board felt strongly and wanted to weigh in, that's within the board's discretion. And to the extent that the board wanted to direct what type of plantings, what type of area design might be appropriate, it is within the city's right-of-way. But I would encourage the board to make those comments during the site plan application so that they can be incorporated into the site plan, any future redevelopment agreement. And to the extent that there is an agreement with the council to handle the way that right-of-way is treated, the board would have an opportunity to weigh in.
Can you clarify for us? Can you just go to a site plan and tell us where that area of discretion starts and ends? Because I just got confused. Because it's in the right-of-way, but it's.
Yeah, so let's look at this. There's, it's just simply, there's just simply a statement that says that the landscaping and frontages need not be consistent with the concept plan. It can be done at the planning board's discretion. And so my point here is that what you see shown on this plan are basically decorative plantings, essentially, between the sidewalk and the street. I think that that's an area that the board should, if you're interested, weigh in on, ask questions during the site plan hearing. And if, if the board feels strongly about the way that area should be treated, I think it's within the board's jurisdiction to, to make that clear during the site plan approval, even if it is going to lead the developer to have to have a discussion with the council. I'm anticipating a redevelopment agreement for this site just like most any other redevelopment project that would move forward.
Can you go back to a site plan, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Just so that, so I just wanna be clear. So you're talking about the area between the property line here and the building. Is that the area that?
Well, that's not within the right-of-way, but that is certainly part of also what I'm talking about. I was, I was speaking of the larger area along the avenues.
To the curb. From, from the property line to the curb is also sort of within the.
Yeah, you can see, they're, well, you can't see because I know the, the plan is small. But the text there says landscape area identified in sort of these greenish boxes. I think they're more clear on, along First Avenue. But, yeah, they're also along Second.
Does the redevelopment plan dictate the streetscape improvements?
No, it does not.
So that's something that has to be developed by the planning board as opposed to being imposed?
Correct.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, much like the way that the board would indicate whether you wanted a bike rack on the sidewalk, for example.
Take an open site plan.
Yeah, I mean, I would encourage, like, much broader thought about the pedestrian amenities, including bumping up the curbs to narrow widths and slow cars down. There's just so much that can be done.
The, the plan doesn't take a position on that. And so it's, it's open for, for discussion by the board and by the city.
I mean, I would suggest that's the responsibility of the developer.
Well, you could make it, similar to the project on Grand, Cuckman and Lake Avenue. They did extensive work on those bumpouts. So they were all, all bump out them, spent a lot of time on them. Now, that one, I think the plan itself dictated those bumpouts. So here, you're gonna have to come up with something.
No, the plan there said that it was the result of the infrastructure element of the waterfront plan, which did not allow bumpouts.
Yeah, they, well, whatever it was, it was, there was some ordinance or statutory document that said, this is what you need to put there. Here, we don't have that. This is gonna be up to the discretion of the board to improve the streetscape.
Well, I think what we might be saying is, within this redevelopment plan, we could request public building improvements, such as bumpouts.
Yes, we can. Yeah, you can request that when the redevelopment plan is so amended, that there be a provision putting in there allowing for the board to impose, you know, sculptor work and sculpture pieces and so on, and streetscape improvements for the project so that they don't come up and say, well, there's nothing in the plan that allows you to do this.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think that that's, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be stopped at the curb, essentially, because that doesn't allow us to move the curb.
It's also, so that I'm like a broken record, but the activation thing, like, I'm just, I'm not gonna believe it, but the First Ave, because we're treating the First Ave like the back of the building, is that it's a really long expanse of just looking at parking. You know, and so what happens between the sidewalk and the building is gonna be really important. And there are opportunities that we can say now and there are opportunities that we can say now to not have it just be the back of the building.
And I absolutely think that you should have front, frontages on First and Second.
I'm gonna have to talk with you about this, or it's just gonna be complex.
That's fine. I'm trying to keep notes, too.
Yeah, good, okay.
You don't have an AI to take root.
That's next.
I'm sure you can, you can run the video through it.
I kind of get the gist, as long as the board gets the gist of what we're doing and what our findings are and what, what our recommendations are. So I'm gonna need that in the form of a motion, and then we gotta see if the board collectively approves all of them, or they want to start editing out. I don't dictate to you, dictate to me. Does anyone want to make a motion to basically what we've just discussed? Is there any, is anybody not...
I guess, I guess the one I'm still stuck on is, are we saying this is consistent with the master plan or not? Because in my head, I feel like it's largely, it's attempting to be consistent with the master plan, but, but with, but could be improved upon to be more consistent with the master plan.
Well, through the magic of legalities, okay, and how lawyers can, we can say, make the general comment, the board fires that the proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan are generally consistent with the master plan. However, in the following areas, the board feels that the project is not consistent with the master plan, and those areas are, go right down this list that we talked about, and these are the recommendations. So you can do it, you can give...
See, I think we should, I think we should split the beat, or whatever they say, what's that expression? Yeah, like, I think we essentially say it's consistent with respect to providing affordable housing, but it's inconsistent on these levels.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not, there's no magic. I mean, I, I can say that in general, you know, you're not saying the whole thing is bad, you don't want to throw the whole thing out until the mayor and council start from scratch. You start from scratch. You say that it's generally consistent, however, these are the higher areas that the board deems that it's not consistent, and just go right down. And in, in light of those findings, we all, we feel these are the following recommendations that we give to the mayor and council for revising this.
My concern with saying that it is generally consistent, though, is it's like almost an immediate out.
No.
It's like, it's actually not quite.
You're lawyering the thing, Eric. I'm the lawyer, you're lawyering the thing. Let me do what I do, and I, if you're saying the whole plan is bad, then say it's bad. But if you're saying that in general, it's somewhat consistent, fine, but I will point out the areas that you believe that it's not consistent, and that, and that, and not leave anything that you want out, and then make the recommendations. I mean, most, I would believe the goal is to find out what you think is inconsistent and what the best recommendations are, to get the best project back from the mayor and council before the planning board, that's, that's a win for the city, win for the applicant, and a win for the neighbors.
Yeah, and I actually see this as two things, is there, there are things about the plan that I, I think we could say are inconsistent with the master plan, and here's a recommendation, and there's also other things that are not necessarily inconsistent with the master plan, but that are recommendations we could make to improve the project.
Basically, that's it, and I go right, right, right to the point, get what you want down on the paper so that the council understands exactly where you stand and what your recommendations are. And make it clear. Can I get any clearer? You notice in the umpteen years I've been doing this, I keep things simple, but directly to the point, so that nobody can misinterpret what I'm saying. And that's why I suggested... Well, yeah, if you couch this in terms of a motion, and see if you can get the votes to pass the motion.
Well, so I guess where I'm sitting right now is, I have five things written down.
Go.
I, I want to go through them, I kind of just want people's take on.
Sure.
Are they inconsistent with the master plan, or are they just things that we would like to recommend, that are not necessarily inconsistent with the master plan, but that are things that we would lay out, recommendations we'd like to make? Like, I'll say number one is that the density is too high compared to the surrounding neighborhood.
Sure.
And we recommend looking at reducing density. To me, that is inconsistent with the master plan, that.
Yeah, but don't, but don't say that, because as Jack said, you're, we're saying in general, this meets the requirements, but specifically, we think that the proposed density is too great. And not consistent with the plan? Right. Okay. So that's pretty straightforward.
So do people feel density is, or, so I'll say this, does people feel density, the density here is or isn't consistent with the master plan?
I think it's inconsistent with the master plan. In terms of the neighborhood and the overall density in the neighborhood, okay? And how you're going to apply it to those principles in the master plan, okay? You feel that it's not consistent, I get that, so that's, that would be...
Not an appropriate transition.
Yeah, that's fine. I get it.
Whereas also, so the next one is setbacks. Setbacks?
Do not respect the historic development pattern of the city.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, next one, the exterior of the building.
I think we should clarify that that setback, you know, like, you have to look at setback on all three sides. It's not just first or second, it's like we gotta look at it from all, all sides.
Well, has, there's been no finding that the setbacks along Langford are second or inconsistent?
If you're gonna push and pull here, you're gonna have to push and pull there, but that's all, it should...
I got it.
Yeah, what I actually written down was that the setbacks are inconsistent with the historical development plan, and we would recommend that the setback on First Avenue be consistent with the prevailing setback of the single-family homes on First Avenue.
It's pretty straightforward.
And to that point, when you're starting to recognize the kind of urban design of the neighborhood, there are front doors on First and Second, lots of them, and this site should have a front feeling door on both sides, so that you don't have the back of a building 300 feet long by 200 feet wide with one entrance.
Facade?
Next one I have...
Yeah, I think like activated facades, digital...
That's, yeah, that's the next one, I have, exterior of the building is not interactive with the surrounding neighborhood, and we recommend increasing ground floor interactivity.
I would say treat First and Second like they are front doors and treat Langford like it's the seat, the vehicular and service entry, like, that's the nature of the street.
Do we want to get that specific?
Well, that's how, I think that's where the, you want the facade and character of the building to interact with the residential character of First and Second, like prioritize those for interaction, active, activation.
Okay, and is this, this is one where I'm struggling with, I would love for the building to be more interactive, of course. Is it inconsistent with the master plan, or is this just something we'd like to recommend?
I think it's inconsistent with the master plan.
I think it is, too, as a pedestrian-friendly walkability, I think is encouraging.
Yeah, it's safety, too, like, everybody's always coming in and out of one side, it's much easier to get away with something where you know who's coming.
Okay, next one I have is, that's not, I don't know how to put this one, but we're concerned about the increase in traffic and parking, we're gonna recommend a traffic impact and network analysis. Inconsistent with the master plan or just something we want to recommend?
Yeah, I think it's inconsistent to...
Where, where's inconsistent?
Yeah, that's...
Well, I think we don't know the impact, and so we can't, we can't...
So then just say, so then don't worry about whether it's inconsistent or consistent, it's, it's, it's a good idea, it's a good recommendation, and we'll put it in there as a strong recommend, finding and a strong recommendation. I'm not concerned whether it's technically inconsistent or consistent with the master plan, it just makes sense. I think it's a great idea. You know, get the point across.
Yep.
The idea is, trying to get to, I'm, I'm, the, the, I'm not worried about consistency or inconsistency, I'm more concerned about the remedies and seeing those remedies come into fruition.
And so I think, too, that, like, you could bundle together a bunch of things about pedestrian, safety, traffic, transportation, and parking all in one thing, which is to say that the design of the street and the impact of the traffic and parking should all be part of this redevelopment plan.
Okay, next one I have is use. So this is one Jim recommended that we leave commercial uses on the ground level as a permissible use. I, I struggle with this one for, for one reason, and that's because I know if there's commercial uses on the ground level, there will be less parking. That's just what happens, right? There's only so much area on the ground level.
Why don't we put that one to a vote?
Yeah, what do people think?
Let's, let's go right down the line.
Well, if you, excuse me, if you are, if the density is not increased, but left as it is, then your parking requirements are substantially less.
But the issue is before us whether or not you want to leave that commercial use as you recommended in or out, correct?
I think yes.
Okay, so let's get a vote on it. Let's go right down the line. Eric, yes, in or out? Yes or no?
Before you vote, can I actually interrupt?
Thank you.
I actually would like to bundle this one with, we talked about, we want to make the exterior of the building more interactive, and our recommendation was just to increase ground floor interactivity. That's, that's hard, but if we also... Yeah, what does that mean? I don't know.
In reality...
But I would like to bundle in there, if we, we could just bundle in there and leaving a commercial use as a permissible use, then they can decide how to make that ground floor more interactive. Maybe it's adding a store, maybe it's not.
That complicates the issue. Isn't the issue whether or not you want a continued commercial use at this site?
I think, I think we're dispensing words. It is permissible, or like, it's being asked to be required.
No, it's being asked to be omitted?
No, I, when it's probably permitted, it's not required.
No, this plan prohibits it, the previous, this 2024 amendment prohibits the commercial use, the 2018 plan permitted, but did not require, correct?
That's what I'm saying.
But I'm for it.
I think, you know, partially, I don't, I'm not for requiring it to be permitted, but I'm not for requiring it.
So your vote is yes to continue with allowing commercial? Okay, go just on.
I was unclear, but Jim wants it to be, I just want to say about the distinction, it is permitted, it is permitted, there's no change to that.
There is a change.
There is a change.
Yes, it is not permitted in this current plan. It is residential only.
Okay, Jim's, Jim only wants it to be permitted.
Like, that plan is residential only.
In the amendment, the amendment changes the original...
Yes, takes it out.
It takes it out.
You want it to be allowed to remain, not a requirement, to be fair, but permitted.
I, I'm gonna say for now, I'm for it as well, because we're asking them to make the ground floor more interactive, so it gives them options.
Okay, so let's go right down the line, Eric. Jennifer?
Yes.
Yvonne?
Yes, what are you voting on? We're voting on whether...
To allow, to permit, continue?
Staying.
Okay.
I mean, yes.
Yes.
I'm staying.
Okay. James?
Yes.
Sure.
All right, Dan? All right, yeah, okay, so it's in. Okay.
Okay, the only other two little things I had that are more like housekeeping things are that little orphan lot, if we want to recommend. I, I'm gonna say, I think we should just recommend rezoning it with the next reexamination of the master plan, but I don't know if anyone else feel, has strong, different feelings about that.
Is that included within the plan that we're reviewing?
No. No, okay, deleting.
Then we really, we're going outside, we're going outside the scope of the review.
Yep. And then there was that one typographic thing Jim brought up.
Department of Energy.
Yeah, Department of Energy versus DCA.
It would work if, if it, if it just said adopted energy standards of New Jersey, and you don't need to identify the agency.
I can't, I, I, I think the board should make a notation of that, but it's not in, it's not within the amendment, so I can't make a change to it as part of, as part of the adoption process, but personally, I think it would be good just to identify that, maybe it's just in the minutes, but just to make clear to the extent there's confusion later when the applicant applies.
Exactly, and that's part of why I just, yeah, why I had to make the notation, because I was thinking about when you come back to the new version of this, and then it'll have those requirements, and it won't make sense. It's minor.
All right. Okay, so you want to put a motion out for these recommendations, for these findings? Show vote. Recommendations? You got that? All right, call the wall.
James Spano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I'm staying.
Eric Palbo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman.
My eligible members?
We have nine members?
Seven.
I'm not here.
So he's the ninth member for tonight? We can't have more than nine votes. So he can vote?
Yes.
Sure.
Mayor Moore.
I'm staying.
Daniel Shonay.
Yes.
Ken Davison.
Yes.
And Vice President.
Yes.
Now, I have a request. This is a very complex matter. I would like you to email me your comments so that I can consider them when I do this resolution, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm a copious hightaker, but I got a whole bunch to sift through. And be specific, I know you were, so give me some specifics. Please.
If evolution of the draft will come back, but...
Yes.
Do you mind reviewing for us, like, the, the headlines? Sorry, like, maybe just the categories?
Okay, density?
Okay.
Setbacks? Architecture? Consistency? Impact and network studies? Traffic? Ingress? Egress? Parking? Just some, just some ideas about transition, consideration of the transition area and density? Yeah, the commercial, we're already putting in, that commercial is going to be permitted,